So this started off as basically adding electric vehicle charging stations to the regulations in anticipation of what will be coming down the road at some point. And it broke EV charging stations down into two categories, which would be commercial and accessory. But also I went on to do some housekeeping matters. One of the housekeeping matters is it pertains to minimum floor area for dwellings, which we currently have minimum full floor area requirements, which are no longer valid as per case law in commercial districts. These regulations were put in place back in the 70s when things were a little different back then. Earth excavation, groundwater monitoring, well requirements. The requirements that we have right now are really designed for, say, environmental testing. It requires for things like locking caps on the wells. And that's like nobody can tamper with them. When you're just monitoring for groundwater, it's not necessary. Non-conforming uses and abandonment. Most towns had, and we still have, a requirement that after one year of not utilizing the property for the non-conforming use, it was deemed to be abandoned. Case law has determined that to be illegal. So, under commercial vehicle charging stations, the definition will be equipment that connects an electric vehicle to a source of electricity to recharge electric vehicles or equipment. Charging station, electric vehicle for accessory uses. An electric vehicle charging station that is used for the purpose of charging vehicles or equipment that are associated with a property that the charging station exists on. This includes vehicles or equipment of residents or tenants of the property, guests, customers, or employees of the property, but does not involve charging, fee, donation, or any other form of compensation for the charging of vehicles or equipment, nor does it involve the charging of vehicles or equipment of the public. And then we have charging station, electric vehicle, commercial use. An electric vehicle charging station that is for use by the public or where a fee, donation, or other form of compensation is rendered for charging of electric vehicles or equipment. And under electric vehicle charging, it proposes to add section FF to 8.2, which is permitted use in the partial districts, and commercial electric vehicle charging stations will be allowed use. Also in 9.34, permitted uses in industrial one district, commercial charging stations. Also permitted uses in the industrial two district, section 9.35, electric vehicle charging stations for commercial. Under parking requirements for commercial electric vehicle charging stations, a minimum of two parking spaces is required for each charging port or cable. So for every charger that a car can be hooked up to, you need at least two parking spaces. Section 13.7, regulation of electric vehicle charging stations. Electric vehicle charging stations for accessory use. They are allowed as accessory use to a dwelling or legally permitted use specifically for the charging of vehicles or equipment that are associated with the property that the charging station is located on. So, and this goes back to the definition where you will not be allowed to charge for vehicles to be charged on. This would be for businesses, this would be for apartment complexes, and for residential homes. An accessory use EV charging station is not allowed for compensation of any kind, not for use by members of the general public. Charging stations that are located outside of a building shall meet the required building set backs for zoning district and shall not be located within the required vegetated buffer area. A zoning permit is required for charging stations that are located outside of a building. And we move on to electric vehicle charging station for commercial use. Commercial EV charging stations are permitted in the commercial, industrial one, and industrial two zoning districts and on municipal property with the commission site plan approval. I think I might have forgotten industrial park. Yeah, we'll have to add industrial park to that section as well. Commercial EV charging stations include any charging station that is for use by the public or where a fee... Oh, no, I wanted to eliminate industrial park, I'm sorry. Charging stations include any charging station that is for use by the public or where a fee, donation, or other form of compensation is rendered for charging of vehicles or equipment. Parking for charging stations shall not occupy parking spaces that are required to satisfy the parking regulations for any use on the property. Any property having ten or more commercial charging station ports or cables requires a special permit, and the commission may require additional parking or stacking areas. So we are designing in a little bit of caution on this. Obviously with any new use, you might see a whole lot of traffic until the use catches up, until more charging stations are developed. So for the first ones, I think it's good to design in a level of caution and make sure we have plenty of extra parking spaces so we do not have traffic issues. We can always adjust the regulations as the electric vehicle market progresses.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question about the proposal, please come on up to the microphones, state your name and your comment or your question.
Sean Peterson. Will this affect residential charging stations people have charged as well?
It will not. So, as an accessory use, if it's going to be outside, it requires a zoning permit. Inside, we require just a building permit.
So if I want to put a wall on the exterior of my house, I have to give it a zoning permit? I need to go through...
If it's a wall pack, yes.
Okay. And then, how does this apply to forklifts?
Apply what?
Forklifts?
Forklifts?
Yeah, similar to all that, right? Chargers, does it apply?
Yes, vehicles and equipment.
And equipment. So what about all these load荷载... charging stations in that building, does it apply?
Inside the building? They require building permits, not...
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from board members?
I still have more to go through, that was just what...
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. Continue.
So minimum billable floor area. Right now, a dwelling with one bedroom is required to have at least 650 square feet for the size of the house. Two bedrooms, the house will have to be 770 square feet. Three bedrooms, 950 square feet. And each additional bedroom, an additional 120 square feet. That's above and beyond the 950. So we are proposing to eliminate that whole section and replace with it, replace that with the minimum allowable floor area shall not be less than what is required by state building code and the Department of Health. So it just simplifies it. That would allow somebody to build a tiny...
A what?
A tiny one.
Tiny, tidy.
8.2, permitted uses in partial districts, proposing to add hospitals and other medical facilities or offices. 12.32, earth excavation, processing, and removal, proposing to eliminate the language and shall have a well screen at least 10 feet in length. The well screen shall have a slot width of .01 inches. The well screen shall be surrounded by a sand filter pack that extends to at least 2 feet above the top of the well screen. The filter pack shall be sealed with a petanite filter pack seal that extends at least 2 feet above the top of the filter pack. The screen interval shall intersect the groundwater table with no more than 3 feet of the screen projecting above the water table. Each well shall have a locking steel protective cover that is secured with a key lock. A copy of the key for each lock shall be provided to the town zoning officials. We've never required any of this for testing the level of groundwater. This all pertains mostly to testing for contaminants. So proposing to eliminate that from the wells that are required to monitor groundwater for earth excavation. Section 14, non-conforming buildings, lots, and uses and abandonment. 14.4 abandonment currently reads, "No non-conforming use which has been abandoned shall be thereafter resumed," and proposing to eliminate the following. A non-conforming use shall be considered abandoned when there is an actual cessation of such use for a period of one year. And again, of course, that would be illegal. And I believe that takes care of it.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions from the public on this application? Any additional comments or questions from board members?
I have a comment on the change to the monitoring laws. I don't know where you're coming from, but I've put many, many of these in brown. And if you don't put them in right, for example, if you don't put them in so they actually get down to the water table, they don't work. So that would be, like, it's got to intersect the groundwater table. Or...
So is there a sentence that you would not want in the feature?
I'd like to kind of work on this a little bit.
Okay.
And, you know, wells can also become a source of contamination if somebody decides to, you know... Yeah. I was hoping for a different word, but I can't...
So maybe a screw cap? Maybe a screw cap rather than a locking cap?
I can open that up right now.
You can, but you'll have to... Okay.
So I would recommend then continuing this to just refine that language.
John, would you like to work on that? Can you take it back to us?
Yeah. Well, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. I think this is a good... I'm more interested in...
Sounds good.
All right. So given that request for modification, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to allow for that adjustment.
I will read this.
Motion by June, second by John, so the public hearing will be continued for our next regularly scheduled meeting, January 10, 2023, 7:00 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is continued to next month. Item C, 22-10ZC of Plainfield Garages and Storage LLC, requesting an amendment to the zoning map for 750 Norwich Road, change from RA19 to C2 commercial, assessors map 17, block 36A, lot 15, presenting for the applicant.
Yes, thank you for the record, Norm Tebow, Killingly Engineering Associates. I am here representing the applicant this evening. Those plays that Ryan is handing out is not for this particular application.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I grab the lights so I can talk. What we are proposing is to change the zone for this 0.8 acre lot with access from Norwich Road and Dow Road. The heavy yellow rectangle that we're showing here is the lot that we're proposing to be changed to the C2 zone. The shaded areas surrounding here, across to the west, there's a commercial zone there. Also substantially to the south is commercial with the exception of one small strip of residential property. And then one property removed from this particular lot is a commercial zone on Perkins Street. This is a relatively small parcel, 0.8 acres, so there are no concrete plans for any type of development on this lot currently. It would not be any kind of a substantial development just due to the small size of the lot, number one. Secondly, the screening requirements that your regulations call for between commercial properties and residential properties is 25 feet. So it would be a very limited type of development if and when the time comes to come before you with an application. And I would like to remind you as well that obviously all this really does is give the owner some opportunities for some different alternatives to develop this site. It does not give him the right to do anything without coming back to this commission for whatever site plan might be required or whatever use they move forward with on this lot. That really is it in a nutshell. It's, I think, the picture speaks for itself, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the audience with a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. Any comments or questions from board members? So this is a map amendment change request, so it's not a site plan review.
Can we just see the map?
No, can you turn that? So that is the property of the corner of the intersection of Route 12 and Dow Road.
Oh, thank you.
Any comments or questions from board members? Any items for staff?
So this does fall within our POCD as being a commercial area. I assume that in the future, that entire section of Dow Road up to the highway will likely become commercial.
So I will entertain a motion on public hearing and a safe deliberation for... All right, I have a motion to close public hearing by John.
Second by...
Second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting. Call the meeting to order. Additions or corrections to the agenda? We have one item to add under new business, item B 22-8 SPL of Spicer Road Realty LLC. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
Aye.
I have a motion by Ross to add to the agenda.
Second by...
Second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions adding to new business, item B? All right, citizen participation. This is opportunity for members of the community to address the board with a comment or question. Hearing and seeing none. Moving on to unfinished old business. Item A, 22-6 SPL of Plainfield Garages and Storage LLC, requesting site plan approval to construct a 6,000 square foot contractor storage facility on property located at zero Norwich Road, map 15, block 72, lot 5, speaking for the applicant.
Thank you for the record, Norm Tebow, Killingly Engineering Associates. I'm here representing the applicant this evening, which is Plainfield Garages and Storage. What we are proposing is a 6,000 square foot contractor's storage building. It will be comprised of four, excuse me, yes, four 1,500 square foot spaces within this building. We are showing an access from Norwich Road, Route 12. We have received approval from the Connecticut DOT for the project. The project will require a wetlands crossing, and we do have approval from the Plainfield into the Wetlands Commission as well for this. And as you can see by the drawing, the heavy blue area is substantially wetlands. Of the 4.6 acres, we've got approximately an acre and a half that we could work in. One of the things that I think we have going for us on this particular lot is that at one point, it was mined for gravel, and it's still pretty much on gravelly soils. So we're able to utilize that to maintain the peak discharge rates off the site by infiltrating, treating and infiltrating the stormwater prior to its discharge. Everything does flow in a northerly direction toward the wetlands. There's a small seasonal stream within the wetlands that flows to the west and beneath Route 12. There's an existing 30-inch concrete pipe that flows beneath Route 12. The drainage was reviewed by the DOT, and they approved it as submitted. We've also received approval from the Northeast District Department of Health for the onsite septic system. It's a rather small septic system. These types of units are typically not occupied for extended periods during the day. What we find is for these types of uses, the contractors will usually come to their storage facility or their shop at the beginning of the day, pick up either a truck or whatever equipment that they need or any kind of materials for whatever project they're working on, and leave the site for the day, and then come back at the end of the day to pick up their vehicle. Not a high-traffic type of use at all. The utilities, excuse me, there is a utility line actually across Route 12, so in order to bring utilities to the site, they'll have to come overhead to a new pole, and then from that new pole underground into the site itself. We have provided the town in this application with the illicit discharge certification that Ryan has approved. I could go through it very quickly for you to just to give you a summary of what the illicit discharge certification says. A visual inspection, the property is a 4-acre acre parcel, historically disturbed and surrounded by welllands on the north, former New York, New Haven, and Hartford Railroad on the south, and Route 12 on the west. Approximately half the property is cleared from historical gravel lining and the other half wooded. Stormwater from the site predominantly infiltrates into the gravelly soils, and the current areas of clearing for development are comprised of flatterate. No smoke tests is applicable for this particular project. Dry weather observation, we found the soils on the property to be sandy and gravelly nature, do not produce any excessive dust. We do close the 600 square foot contractor storage building, associated driving paved parking drains will be infiltrated into the excessively drained soils via construction of a stormwater infiltration basin and rain garden. There will be no direct discharge of stormwater to resource areas from the paved areas. Rooftop inspection is not applicable, and I certify that in my judgment, the discharge from the site consists only of stormwater or of stormwater combined with allowable non-stormwater discharges pursuant to state statutes. The certification is based upon observation, evaluation, and design of the stormwater discharge from the site. I further certify that no interior building floor drains will be installed, which will be connected to any storm drain system. Secondly, regarding certification of compliance with the town Plainfield Flood Control Ordinance, the current flood mapping, FEMA flood mapping, does show a small band of flood within the wetlands area. We have been promised the new flood maps now for about two years, which have not been issued yet, but we do have access to review them, and the new maps that hopefully will be released at some point in the spring show that this site is completely out of the flood plain. That being said, the development that we are proposing here now does not impact the flood plain as defined by the current flood mapping. As I said, we did receive approval from the Northeast District Department of Health on October 11th, and I think all in all, relatively simple site design, a simple site because of the types of soils that we have out here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members? Any comments from staff?
All my comments have been addressed.
All right, so hearing and seeing none. I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Motion.
Second.
Second. So I have a motion to approve by June. I have a second by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is approved. Thank you. All right, moving. Item B was a public hearing that was continued, so I will entertain a motion to continue old business. I have a motion by Ross to continue item B. A second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B is continued. Item C was also a public hearing that's continued to next month, so I'll entertain a motion to continue that old business.
Make that motion.
Motion by June to continue. Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item C is also continued. Item D, 22-10ZC of Plainfield Garages Storage LLC, requesting an amendment to the zoning map for 750 Norwich Road, change from RA19 to C2 commercial, assessors map 17, block 36A, lot 15. I believe John wanted to kick off our...
Yeah. So we have a reasonable change to resolve. So I'm...
Hold on a second. Hold on. Let him finish the motion before he second. And since it is a map amendment change, please include an effective date of the change, and staff had recommended January 1st.
Okay, I will amend my motion to include an effective date of...
January 1st. All right, we have a motion by John to approve with an effective date of January 1st. Do I have a second?
No.
Ross, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is approved with an effective date of January 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Item A, 22-8 SP of Ronald Tetro, requesting special permit for a 736 square foot accessory dwelling unit. This does require a public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to schedule that public hearing.
I'll make that motion to a public hearing. I'll second.
A motion by June to schedule public hearing to our next regularly scheduled meeting. A second by Ross. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, scheduled for public hearing. Moving on to item B, 22-8 SPL of Spicer Road Realty LLC, care of David Health, requesting a modification to the site plan for earth excavation, special permit Z 2021-2214, located at zero Black Hill Road, assessors map 7, block 53A, lot 55, RA60 zoning district.
For the record, I'm Dave Al, here in Landscare, Provincial River. On behalf of Spicer Road Realty LLC, this is... So this is a site located on Black Hill Road that you recently approved for the excavation of sand and gravel. After some discussion with the applicant, he inquired about changing around some of the phasing, and that's based on the characteristics of the material and what he has in immediate need for his concrete production business. create a plan set. We basically reverse the phasing from what was approved by this commission. To me, recall previously that this site is accessed off Black Hill Road, which is often in this vicinity to the north of the actual excavation site. And in the need of the site, we have previously had phase one being done first and working our way towards the back of the site, and we're reversing that. The other reason that the applicant would like to do this is he is kind of cognizant of the fact that this, you know, this does have some potential to impact the neighbors, and the feeling is having our access rather than coming here along this far edge of the excavation away from residential lessens the impact to them when this area is being excavated. He's basically working a... He's basically working a phase, he's always working in a bowl and the opportunity to start at the southerly side back here and work his way to the north. So again, he's working inside of a bowl as he's approaching these residential areas. You may also recall that we were previously proposing excavation within, let's see, out of the east of here where there's transmission lines. That's turning out to be more trouble than it's worth with EverSource. And so we've eliminated that from the proposal. We would still be traversing that runway here with our haul road, but that's basically activated and requires no excavation. It's certainly allowable to drive across that easement area. So other than that, we're keeping the proposal the same as what you've approved. We're still having the fueling parking pad here where you enter the excavation area so that will be put in at the outset of phase one remaining place until the operation is completed. We updated the excavation quantities on here to reflect some changes in phasing and we slightly modified the phase lines to kind of even them out because we're eliminating the swath here rather than having one tiny phase with the slope that was left. We adjusted the phase a little bit, updated the quantities, the total obviously being a little bit less than what was initially approved. That's a little bit, EverSource right away from the proposal. Any questions you might have about the changes?
All right, any questions from board members? Staff have noted one recommended condition if the board determines to approve. As this is a modification to the site plan of special permit Z two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two fourteen, this plan will replace the approved plan for Z two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two fourteen. All conditions of the special permit remain in effect with the exception of the correspondence slash agreement from EverSource as there will be no excavation within the easement. Any other comments from staff?
Nope.
Okay. Any items for discussion on board members? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion and please include the condition if it's a motion to approve. Do I have any motions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it with the changes.
With the condition as read?
Conditions as read.
Okay. I have a motion by June to approve with the condition as read, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, application is approved with that condition as read. Moving on to reviewing and acting on the minutes of the November ninth meeting, were there any notes or changes to the meeting minutes? Okay. And I had no changes. Would anyone else? I have a motion by Roz to accept.
I'll second that.
Second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention by John, minutes are approved. Do we have any correspondence, Ryan?
We don't.
No correspondence. Report from zoning enforcement.
All right, fourteen Kennedy Road, Mr. Bolio, nothing new to report on that one. Thirty-two forty-four Norwich Road, Suite LLC, this is currently before the courts still. Thirteen Simmons Ave, Briscoe Motor Vehicle Junkyard, we did receive judgment by the court. We are moving forward with trying to go into, clean up the site. Carbox Road Extension, Philip Payne, PHH Mortgage Corporation for Junkyard. Property has been removed, has been cleared of all bulky waste. The house has been recited, the porches have been redone. Last remaining items is to remove the campers and the boats. Two fifty-six Spalding Road, RVs Dwelling, we are moving forward with court action on this. Ninety Moose Pond Road, Lynn Stanley for dead trees, they have all been replaced, so this is now closed. Five fifty-two Skorrock Road for Junkyard, this is also before the courts. Zero Community Ave, extension for a bulge operation. They had entrance issues where they didn't have proper pavement or track the pads and they are working to correct those, I spoke to them last week. Zero Sterling Road, they have a cross trust property, possible camper as dwelling. I spoke to her today and she stated that someone was staying in the camper, but they have since moved out. The camper will remain unoccupied. The chickens that were on the site were also removed, so it's going to be staying there barring any further issues, this is closed. South Katy Lane, lot thirteen A, Central Cycle Club, use of the upper lot for race vehicle parking and camping. This went before the zoning board of appeals last week and we withdrew the cease and desist, that item is closed. Twenty-four dash twenty, yeah, twenty-four dash twenty-six South Chestnut Street, Richard Conti for bulky waste and camper. One of the businesses that were there left a bunch of used items, it was a consignment store or a secondhand store. And they left a bunch of, a bunch of items out behind the building and the property owner is working to clean that up. And that does it.
Okay, thank you. For a report from planning and development, Mary Ann could not be here tonight and she indicated she had no changes from the report she submitted. Under item ten A other, we have election of officers. So the current officers are myself as chairman, Charlotte Stradens, vice chairman John Meyer, and secretary is Roz, so we have our recording secretary. So for the board members, if you see so fit, I would like to continue with that slate of officers. Are there any items for discussion on?
Make a motion to continue with the same slate.
Awesome. All right, so I have, Forrest opened the floor for nominations, so the nomination is the current slate of the Charlotte Stradens chairman, vice chairman John Meyer, secretary Roz Shivitt, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations. I have a motion by Roz to close nominations, second by John, all in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Nominations are closed, I'll entertain a motion to approve the slate of officers as read. I have a motion by John to approve the slate of officers, second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the slate of officers is approved. Thank you, everybody. And with that, final item is adjournment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Roz to adjourn. I have a second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.